Yeah, thank you, John. Z Seppola, 92 Granite Street, Rockport. I want to preface my remark by saying the only reason I'm here tonight as a Rockport resident is because the Rockport School Committee has not met subsequent to some actions that took place in town recently, which I'll go to when they have their next meeting. But what I wanted to speak about, what I wanted to ask, and I don't want an answer tonight, I want to make it clear that I don't want an answer tonight. I just want to comment on something and have the US School Committee think about it. So perhaps in the next six months or so, when I come back here, I can ask them, what did you say, think about this? And it has to do with what the editorial in today's paper was, "Fostering Civic Engagement Is The Right Step." I've been following the progress of that bill since last March, when it was debated in the State House. And I'm looking at the future of our communities, Gloucester Rockport, indeed Massachusetts or the United States, in terms of what the students are learning about their own government, how it operates, and so on. There's been any number of actions, well, I won't go into that. In Gloucester last week, a lady wrote a letter to the editor about zoning changes and zoning decisions that were made on the basis of new estimates of rising sea levels. And she mentioned that she didn't think it was appropriate that government projections of rising sea levels might be factors in zoning decisions made in Gloucester. I'll just use that as an example. I get to the gist of the point, I'm reading a book, I'm trying to get to the point. And it says, bring your, your, all right. What does law on Massachusetts civic engagement really entails is having students like, that are standing there, get, be mandated to take care, to take part in projects that sometimes students live, you know, on, to learn about the civic processes. And personally, as a disenfranchised Rockport voter, I'm going to be going down there and asking how they feel about what embarrassing things that happen on local levels, but nevertheless happen. And what I'm sort of going to be asking or wishing you to consider along in the future is, will the school committee look at situations that have, that actually took place in local communities and consider using them as projects? Or not consider using it, allowing them is the better term, allowing them to be put forth in a public forum where students are acting out what actually happened and coming to what the Gloucester Times says, a process by which they can logically consider differing points of view, arguments, things like that. So I just want to draw your attention to this article. Bruce Todd, when they sponsored the bill, asked that there be no added in local cost to comply with this bill. He was solemnly defeated by the rest of the legislature. But it's a worthwhile bill, I think, and it needs to have some careful attention to circumstances that might be embarrassing, but very helpful to future generations learning the process.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Long time, John.
Yeah. For those who don't get that while we graduated from high school together. As you know, this, there is, the state has passed a laws that passed and they will have sent it to the DESE and they are going to be producing guidelines, is that correct, about civic curriculum? But, because we'll always have local input as to how we implement that. And I'm sure that's something we'll be talking about in the, for the next coming year. So, thank you for your concern.
Thank you.
Promise I'll be going down to Rockport.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Recognitions. Any recognitions that anybody would like to state?
An opportunity to see the West Parish production of Lorax. I think it was a couple of Thursdays ago, we had this meeting and it was a terrific production. The kids were exceptionally enthusiastic, as was the audience. I don't know Lorax all that well because my girls have aged out and moved on, so that wasn't part of our movie-going experience. But it had strong environmental themes to it and such, so it was very well done and I commend the art and music departments and the entire West Parish community on great production.
And we should also mention that it was directed by Heidi Dahl and who was supported by the Gloucester Education Foundation, once again.
This is part recognition and part advertisement. Just wanted to recognize the O'Malley students for the development of their aquaponics lab. If you haven't seen it, in the downstairs windowed corner of the library, underneath, there are now nearly 70 aquaponics setups. It's incredibly professional, it's, it's an amazing job. And there's going to be an open house next Thursday, February 6th, 3:00 to 4:30 PM. And I encourage anybody to come over and see what's going on in the O'Malley bio lab. It's really impressive.
Well, with the school and the city, we're having programs called Change is Simple. It's happening at West Parish, it'll be up at Beeman. I went to a couple of them. The one, I saw the fifth graders participate, "The Ocean Health is In Our Hands," and our students are so up to it with as far as recycle the plastics and right on it. And then they had one at the library that was the Human Impact on Animals, and the kids were so engaged. The kids, I'm telling you now, we have a group of kids that, you know, I'm glad that their parents are teaching them all about the oceans and the animals and the plastic because they're ahead of most of the schools. I've been to a couple of schools looking at that and I'm so proud of our kids. I mean, really run on top, and next is going to be at Beeman and I'm gonna, hopefully I'll give, send it out and come, superintendent likes to come too. We've done this before and we continue to do this. It's to educate the children, so every fifth grade class and fourth grade class gets to do it. I mean, it's a little costly for the school and the city, but we think this is the best thing and how we can help engage our children. But I think pretty soon they're going to be teaching classes because they're really, really engaged and they're doing great, so. Change is simple.
Anything else? We'll move on to our student advisory council, and as you have brought backup tonight.
We do, we did, literally.
Introduce everyone, or maybe they can introduce themselves.
Yeah, well, you guys know me already.
Hi, I'm Catherine Evans, I'm treasurer of class of 2020, which is the junior class.
And I'm Espudon, I'm the secretary of the junior class.
I'm Willow Phoenix and I'm vice president of 2020.
I'm Caroline Mees, I'm the secretary of the exec board, I've been here before.
Well, not much to report on February, besides the freshman class and the junior class will be holding a Chipotle fundraiser of the one in, I think it's Cavan Street in Beverly, I'm not really sure where it is, but it's up there. In March, we have an action-packed month. We have sophomore event is March 8th, junior event March 22nd, and the ROTC ball is March 29th. And my friend from the junior class would like to take a second and share the fundraiser.
Would you like to? I want one, actually, right now. Right now, we're holding a fundraiser for the junior class. That is all thanks to Joel, we wouldn't really be able to do it without him. We're doing Gloucesteropoly, which they did it back in 2002, he said, which was an amazing fundraiser and Joel has been telling us about for years now, about how he's like, you need to do this, you need to do this, this will be the best fundraiser you ever did. And it is a fully customizable Monopoly board that is all based around Gloucester and Gloucester companies. So we're selling advertisements based on the company, on each slot. So, for example, Marvin Gardens, instead of that, it will be Gordons. So, right now, we've sold 12, 12 spots on the board and we're looking to sell 11, 11 general spots and then one waterworks spot and then the four railroads is what we've left.
I want Do Not Pass Poll.
So each spot's $300.
How much?
$300.
Really?
And then you're going to sell the game?
Yes, we're hoping that we're going to sell them for $25 each.
Sounds fine, Joel.
I think you'll sell them.
Is that when you graduated?
The year before me, I was insanely jealous. We sold towels, maybe you don't mind.
I went to Joel's office last week.
He bought a square, what square?
Yeah, he bought a spot.
I bought a square, Seaside League will be on that.
I'll buy a square.
And.
I think my sister bought a square.
So last week, we went to Joel's office and we were kind of in a slow spot with the fundraiser, but he gave us a bunch of ideas and since then, we've sold about eight spots.
So if we know someone besides ourselves that might want to help out with this, how, what is, what?
There's contact information right down there, yeah. So there's, we have our own email as student council for junior class, which is GHS StuCo 2020, and I've also put my personal phone number on there if anyone has to call or has any questions.
And what's the deadline?
Um, right now, there's no deadline, but we're hoping to close it up around the month of February, February end, yeah.
And who are you, how are you going to be selling the games?
Um, so, we're gonna sell.
Do you want to take off?
Um, we're gonna be selling them, well, the Brass Monkey, they bought a spot and they offered for us to be able to sell them at their store during the summertime, like, at like the sidewalk bazaar and the block parties and stuff, which is very nice of them.
We also have about 20 members on student council, so they'll all, they'll all get a chance to.
Well, I'm sure that everyone that buys squares, we could get a whole bunch of them to give away for Christmas gifts.
Not a bad idea.
Not a bad idea.
We've been sharing it on Facebook and we've been handing it out, like, going to places and following up with them.
But if you could all spread the word, that'd be great for the year.
What is your Facebook page?
GHS StuCo 2020?
Wait, what is it?
Um, I think it's GHS Student Council, I don't think you put 2020.
It's right at the bottom. Is it?
But we're the class of 2020, I don't know if it says.
Okay, so you sold some and you just have eight more to sell?
Uh, no, we have 11 more to sell. 11 more general spots and we're in desperate need of a plumbing or water company. I've been trying to find like emails and things, but I haven't had such a good luck, so.
You will spread that around?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Any other questions? Well, thank you very much, you're welcome to stay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'll give you $100 in the Sunbank for Seaside League, so you're an actual star.
You ever played Monopoly?
Yeah.
Instead of properties, you buy businesses. So we free blue businesses, free, free businesses.
Same things, but it'll be on income.
You can go all the way together and all the way.
You've never played Monopoly?
No, I, I just, no, I guess. I play Monopoly all the time, but I don't understand this, I haven't played it. It's okay, we'll figure it out.
They're gonna make Monopoly games in Florida, instead of saying Kentucky Road, it'll be Joel's name. And they'll make the kind of whole thing, make the whole same thing.
I'm a little slow today.
Let's move on to the consent agenda. And are there any items on the consent agenda that anyone would like to remove for separate consideration?
Did we get the amendments?
Which one?
The.
Yeah, they should all be in there.
So do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I have so much.
Second?
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. We'll move on to our deliberations on educational issues. And the first up is a report from the Essex North Shore Agricultural Technical School. Construction and Craft Labor Union Local 22 lost a public school's pilot vocational program, for which there's a handout here, I believe.
Yes, there is. We also have a couple photographs. The, this, this program began this past Monday. For those who are not aware of what's taking place, we have signed a memorandum of agreement for pilot project with NSAT Essex North Shore Agricultural Technical High School, along with the Construction and Crafts Laborers Union Local 22, to provide opportunities for Gloucester High School students to remain as Gloucester High School students, but to also then participate in a vocational program in the afternoon at, at NSAT, for lack of the term. A couple of photographs first. There are seven students ultimately who've signed up for the program and we can see a couple of them here, over at Essex Tech. They're going to be involved in programs involving landscaping, masonry, and carpentry. Here's a picture of the students, you can see that Local 22, the Construction and Crafts have provided them with jackets, with hard hats, and with boots as well, boots on the ground. The gentleman in the picture is Lou Mandarini, he's one of the officers for Local 22 and has been a very active driving force in bringing this pilot project into form. Here we see him having some conversation with a couple of our students. And here they're doing some work, it looks as if they're offloading a truck, involving the wheelbarrow. And here's a rather content student showing some very nice looking boots, courtesy again of, of Laborers Union Local 22. More of the same. And I think those are the pictures that we have. I'll try to keep that up there. The partnership, as I said, started just this past Monday, we've been working on it since the summer. The school committee, Melissa and Kathy and others have been directly involved, as was Representative Ferrante getting it off the ground. Credit to a number of people at NSAT as well, including the superintendent Heidi Riccio. We originally had around 13 students, seven are attending. It seems though if there's any resistance, it's coming from parents who are concerned about having their children not home in Gloucester in the afternoon, if they have to do with younger siblings, that they need some child care for, or there might be a family member who's not well. But that's where most of the resistance seems to have come from. We also, this Friday, we'll be hosting the first day in the renovated classroom in 1407 in the lower floor of the, of the Science Wing. The students will be here Monday through Friday till 1:00 to 30. They'll be having lunch and then they're whisked by bus and brought out to Middleton. On Fridays, the program comes to us here at GHS and the Local 22, their teacher will be co-teaching along with our advanced machine technology teacher on a host of different topics, including entrepreneurship, safety, employability, and a host of issues that are not directly lifting and moving and designing and building and so on and so forth. The students have signed an agreement where they understand the expectations of both the student handbook here in Gloucester as well as the student handbook over at Essex Tech. I believe you have a copy of at least the Gloucester High School piece. There's been ongoing coordination between the guidance departments at both schools. Our councils took a tour of the facilities over at Essex Tech. It gives them an opportunity to see what is it they're talking about, like any good salesman, you gotta know what your product is. And so they've been working, they had a chance to go and tour that. They had to make sure that they were coordinating with both our special education department as well as our English as a second language, to ensure that there was course availability for all of our students. And most, if not all, of the seven students at this point are the high needs population. So again, they're here Monday through Friday from 7:30 to 11:30. They attend the first lunch, the bus pickup is at 11:30 and then I think the bus leaves four or four, between 4 o'clock and 4:20, after about three hours worth of the CBT, the Career Vocational Technical Education piece. Again, with the Friday academic classes taking place in the morning, first lunch and then three blocks and they go to room 1407. Some of the curriculum and materials, at the, at the very beginning, they'll be learning about hand power and pneumatic tools, line and grading equipment involving lasers, levels, measuring ladders and scaffolds, masonry, which is a separate topic from concrete, something that I have learned, hoisting and rigging, excavation, pipeling, welding, and as I mentioned before, the fundamentals of health and saving and safety, a number of plan readings, the issue of employability, entrepreneurship, how to manage a business, how to manage a job, how to set goals for yourself, how to communicate plans, applications of business and financial concepts, and even any legal or ethical issues that surround the work that they are, are learning. So we are, we've, we've started and we're hopeful that this process is going to grow. There'll be a need for some support, not only from the Department of Ed, but we'll be looking for some funding for next year as well, through possible grants and the like. We also hope that Essex Tech is going to help us to refurbish some of our vocational classrooms, which are in need of a makeover, and we'd like to see those look as appealing as any other vocational program. So we're hoping to make that happen this summer as well.
Any questions?
I just want to add, I've been getting pitches from Dr. Riccio about programs in Sata too, and happy to hear that seven kids are in there, hoping that it grows bigger. I thought we'd scaled off, we were going to have around 13, so I'm surprised to hear seven. But I believe this is the kind of program that's going to grow by word of mouth, you know? This is the first time this program has happened and that's why it's called the pilot. However, PBD and Salem have already expressed interest in doing the same thing as soon as possible. There was not going to be news today about PBD wanting to get their kids into a program like this, so the program as a whole at Essex Tech is going to expand or probably expand quick. So I'm looking forward to seeing how many more students will hear about it and grab this opportunity that is just phenomenal to, to get into that school. And hopefully, like you said, this leads to state funding down the road because that was a conversation we had had last year when we had Dr. Nkemi as superintendent. He had brought up this idea of looking at different ways to bring more kids into the school at different hours, but yet, having the Board of Education involved to provide some funding, knowing the school just wasn't built big enough and nor did we want it built much bigger because we wanted to keep that small community. But this is the beginning of something really good, so.
We know that the Commissioner of Education is quite interested. We know that the state Department of Education would like to see more opportunities for, for vocational career vocational education for students. This is one model, it's not unlike what's going on at Great Lawrence Tech, and hopefully they'll have enough to expand and that our students will become increasingly more interested as well. I should mention just a little bit about the recruitment. We were not looking to give this offering to students or in vocational programs, but rather guidance was sifting through and looking for students who they know aren't quite sure what their future is going to bring. I'm sure there are plenty of students who feel that way, and then inviting them and giving them the opportunity to join this program.
I just want to recognize Val Gilman, yeah. And then while we're here, just know when you get at that school, why should we ask the kids to have spots? How these programs are.
So for the record, Val Gilman is our, our counselor, as well as the Gloucester School representative to the school committee at the NSAT.
School.
NSAT, the school.
That's exact, you can call it that.
Yes, you can call it that.
Yeah, to make sure we follow up.
So, thank you. Would you like to add anything, Val?
No, but I'm excited, I came here to hear about the program because I wanted to be updated and be able to do my part when I go back there for the school committee meeting. So thank you for recognizing me.
Any further questions? Then we'll move on to always the most interesting dramatic part of the evening, Superintendent's Report.
Once again, thank you, Mr. Chair. Most appreciated. Item number one, State Board of Education is looking at automated test scoring of MCAS exams. They have run a couple of pilots, starting with one question, and now they're expanding it into the number of questions that are going to be scored automatically. But they will continue to make sure that the MCAS essays are being scored by humans first, and then they're also using this automated scoring program as well. They'll be doing it this year for grades three through eight. And whichever, the higher of the two scores is, are, I'm not sure, that's the score that the student will officially get. But what the Department of Ed is saying is that their first preliminary studies using the automated scoring have been the way they use is, is promising. So we may be on the cusp of seeing something quite dramatic in terms of how not just multiple choice and short answer, but actual essays themselves are being scored as the artificial intelligence for these kinds of programs continues to become more and more sophisticated. So far, in their pilot programs, this automated engine, as they refer to it, has scored close to 400,000 student responses. So it's, it's being tested and it seems as though it's on its way. Item number two, the Athletic Conference composition, there are some changes with the Northeast Athletic Conference teams. From the Greater Boston League were brought into NEC a couple of years ago, including Everett, Walden, Medford, and Somerville. And I don't know the particulars or the politics, but apparently there has been a vote which has not continued to support those teams remaining in the NEC. These teams originally came from the Greater Boston League because there had been some defections by other teams in the GBL. And apparently there are going to be some changes beginning as early as next season. Those four teams formerly from the GBL are will, they, they're prepared to be removed from the league and this will require that all of our schedules are going to be readjusted for, for next year. Item number three.
Wait, wait. So as you say, you don't know the politics or anything behind it, but it sounds like four schools have dropped out of our competition. So does that mean our school will be competing against the same, many of the same teams more often to fill the schedule, or will they have less?
I don't have the answer, but I'd like to invite Mr. Plata to come to a future meeting to give us more specifics as to how this thing is going to play out.
And where will these schools go play?
I don't have the answer.
Are there regulations for this?
I, I don't know how it works.
I think we need more information to speculate.
A couple of years back, if you recall, we had considered the possibility of serving breakfast after the school bell begins, after the day begins. We had gone to the Department of Education, we were concerned about the issue of time on learning, we didn't receive all that much support at the time. Well, they have recently passed alongside the budget legislation which now mandates breakfast after the bell for schools that have at least 60% or more students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch. Specifically, the language states that, quote, kindergarten and grade 12 inclusive public Specifically, the language states that, quote, kindergarten and grade twelve inclusive public schools that are required to serve breakfast under said section one C of chapter sixty-nine, where not less than sixty percent of students are eligible for free or reduced price meals shall offer breakfast after the instructional day has begun and the tardy bell rings. So we're back where we had originally started, probably with respect to this particular initiative. And it needs to be implemented by the end of this year, shortly before the end of this year. There are models that we're going to begin exploring. We have to notify the Department of Ed by April the first regarding what specific alternative breakfast model that we plan to implement with the expectation that we would begin implementing the new model by May the thirty-first of this particular school year. So it would give us a couple or three weeks to see how this is going to fly.
Is that breakfast for all students?
All students.
All students.
All students.
Free?
And it's free. And so which schools are all of our schools?
Beeman and Veterans, if I didn't mention it before. Beeman and Veterans qualifying.
I heard an article recently about this that has been implemented and they said one of the unexpected results is that people, because they get free and reduced, because they've got to get a free breakfast, but in the lower grades, they don't sign up for free and reduced lunch because they get it anyways and that's the only benefit that they are receiving. And consequently, that becomes problematic because they don't go through the process of signing up. So just keep that in mind.
Yep.
As an issue.
Is there any effect on the time on learning? Was the issue last time around, knocked us under a threshold? Is that problem resolved this time around? And if so, how?
Well, there's been no comment from the Department of Ed with respect, in other words, we're not, we're not going to be penalized for loss of time on learning. I'm taking in your question to mean can we do quality instruction while we're distributing breakfast in the classroom and all the rest? Officially, we're not going to lose time on learning.
Thank you.
But in terms of the quality of what we want to do with that time, can we properly instruct kids while, you know, students are bringing in bags and setting them up and the kids are going to get their breakfast and bring it back to the desk and all that? That is something that we're going to have to work our way through.
But the idea is it's a work in breakfast?
Correct. We want to make it a work in breakfast for sure. Yes?
And I'm on the wellness and we're meeting on the twelfth to discuss these options.
Right. Good. In terms of cleanup and custodial maintenance, there's a whole host of things that are associated with this that we'll have to have some conversations about. Item number four deals with the Governor's Fiscal Year Twenty Chapter Seventy and Educational Budget Recommendations. He has proposed a budget increase of 1.5% for a total budget of $42.7 billion. But there's also a separate, quote, "Act to Promote Equity and Excellence in Education", which begins to implement some of the recommendations of the Foundation Budget Review Commission, which submitted their study back around 2016. It does call for codifying current practices and also there is a $201 million increase, about 4.1%, with respect to a money for chapter seventy. The minimum aid increase is set at $20 per pupil. That, there are 183 districts that are going to be receiving the minimum. We are one of them. And what that translates into for Gloucester is an increase in chapter seventy funds for FY20 of $62,720. That's based upon a figure of 3,136 students, which includes our added district replacement and as I mentioned, is a $20 per student increase or a 0.9% increase in aid to the city.
Do you know what factors? I mean, I assume it's how we rank in terms of what they think is our perceived need, that we end up on the lower, the minimum reimbursement as opposed to more than that?
Yeah, it's based upon the foundation formula.
It's based on the chapter seventy distribution formula, which is based on property value and income, but it's way, a little bit heavier on property value. So doesn't, not on, not on what you're getting, not your tax levy, but your property value.
The Foundation Budget Review Commission has other recommendations, some of which are beginning to be acted upon, some of which may be acted upon over the course of six years. Health insurance remains one of the major concerns and considerations regarding increase in budgets. They're looking to target, base target rates on group insurance commission numbers. There are some increases proposed for special education for added district students, where the allocation now for the foundation budget is 27,000, looking to raise that to 29, which would be the first of the six-year phase. There is a call for and recommendations for increase in aid with respect to our English language learners, increasing rates for them. This legislation alongside the FY20 budget is also particularly aggressive in funding monies for ELL students at the high school level because of the fact that they must make up for language acquisition in a very short period of time. And there are also some considerations for a more progressive rate structure with respect to economically disadvantaged students. But the, it all, as I said before, washes out to about $62,000 incomes for FY20. The last option is just a notion, we're aware that OSHA safety regulations have been slightly modified, more sensitive to in particular what school districts have to report and when to the Department of Labor Standards, if and when there are serious and potentially tragic injuries that occur. This new legislation provides new requirements, reporting requirements. So we are aware of that and make sure that our HR department acts appropriately and consistently along with us.
Any questions on the superintendent? Would you motion accept superintendent's report?
Second.
Do you say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Propose, chair. And we'll move on to our committee reports. Mr. Gross is not here. You want to have your...
I don't have my notes.
We don't have the, we don't have, I can, we had a number of meetings, I didn't, there was one I did not attend, in which we had all of the principals and department heads, not department heads, program, transportation, special education, athletics, come in and explain their budget to the EMF and make requests for things that were not going to be recommended by the superintendents and CFOs. Main budget proposal. The process there will be that they will present the, the administration will present their budget proposals to EMF, EMF will review it and make a recommendation to the full committee. And the budget will be presented the first meeting in February?
Usually last week.
Last meeting. We reviewed the budget, the current, the nineteen budget, and there doesn't seem to be any concerns at this moment. Some accounts of substitute teachers are being stressed or where we have some long-term illnesses, but other than that, we're looking at needed attention. We reviewed the open tickets from DBW and those tickets, the, I don't recall anything being of any long-term, everything seems to be getting fixed as they come up. We reviewed food service. There's been a slight increase in the money owed by students, but, and they're running a little bit in the deficit, but that is typical February, December because there's so few days, lunch days, as well as the holidays in general. But in general, the projection is that that will be back in the winter of the year. Revolving funds.
Circuit breakers has a little lower balance than when it started with, so we're closely monitoring the circuit breaker balance.
And then the two odd things that we took was there, it seems to be a trust that was left to the Gloucester Public Schools sort of, and it is being held at Bank America. Bank America is no longer interested in maintaining it and they've requested that we take it over. There's about $55,000 capital at this point in the trust. It dates back to the eighteen hundreds. The, we're, the end result is we're seeking legal advice on what we can actually do with it, whether we can either just incorporate the income from this point on. It's supposed to go to...
High school.
It's supposed to go to the high school.
Curriculum.
And it's supposed to go to curriculum sort of.
Vitals.
Yes, there was something about vitals and...
Might be a problem.
It might be a problem. So anyways, we're looking for legal advice on how we deal with that. And then there's the art somnia fundraising project, which we learned about from some of the principals in West Parish and Plum Cove. They have, the art teachers have taken, applied and have access to a website where they submit students' art and it then gets, can be viewed by parents or other customers and they can have the art printed onto coffee cups or T-shirts or...
Whatever.
Whatever. I haven't looked at it, but, and in return, the art teacher or the school receives either gift certificates or access to buying art supplies. This raises a bookkeeping issue, a problem with funds and how they're dealt with. So we got advice from, from the Messages Association, school committees on a policy about crowdfunding and we're going to be looking into that and try to have that in place for next year. We'd have to tighten up how that happens. It's not a lot of money, it's a few hundred dollars. And it really isn't any different than the, all of the, in the consent agenda, we accepted a number of grants coming back from photography companies that take pictures of the kids and those monies go into the student activity accounts and that's basically how it needs to happen, so, for accounting. Anything else?
No.
Okay. This will be it. Program.
Personnel.
Personnel, that's right.
Personnel met last Tuesday, the 22nd. The attendance was myself, Michelle Sweet, and Tony Gross, the members of that subcommittee. We talked about a number of items. There was no action taken from the subcommittee, however, I'm going to give you some little fun facts about the things we talked about. The first item was minimum wage. As we know, in January, minimum wage went up to $12 an hour. So we had administration identify any employees within the district that are not meeting that $12 requirement. And I think it should be said too, we received an opinion from Naomi Stomburg, our attorney, last year, which stated that the schools did not have to comply with the minimum wage requirement. However, last year, as you know, we took steps to comply when they went from the $10.50 to the $11.50. So a few facts, we do have several non-union and one-union contracted group within the district that is not meeting that wage. Crossing guards are currently making $11.96 per hour. Our bus monitors are making $11.96 per hour. Food service, the part-time employees and the part-time subs, the part-time employees are making $12.19, so that's pretty close, but the food service subs are only making $11 an hour. And there's a sense that that may be why we're having difficulty getting substitutes in that area when we need service and food service. Noon supervisors are also making $11.96 per hour. So we had a discussion and I believe we're going to discuss further in executive session tonight about what we should do with those groups going forward and what our response will be. We did have it calculated out how much it would cost to bring up the, up to the minimum wage and so there's some decisions that have to be made and we'll, we'll talk more about that later tonight with executive session as part of a negotiation strategy. The second topic we talked about was student absent reports. I know some members have said...
Staff.
Staff. I'm sorry, I say student.
You did.
Sorry. Staff absent report. I know I and some other members have received complaints from parents about children being taught by substitutes, so we took a little initiative to look in to the statistics on that. And there was a couple charts that were prepared on the topic. So we looked at the East Gloucester schools first for the staff attendance and I'll give you some quick figures. In Beeman, there's 29 teachers. They had a total of 199 student, I mean, I'm sorry, teach staff absences last year for the seventeen, eighteen school year. East Gloucester has 16 teachers. It was a total of 120 absences. Gloucester High School has 77 teachers and there was 517 absences reported. O'Malley has 52 teachers. There was 307 absences. Plum Cove, I'm sorry, so I said elementary, but this is all the schools. Plum Cove had 15 teachers, 81 absences. Veterans, 24 teachers with 102 absences. And West Parish, 26 teachers with 127 absences. It was then reported that there are 37 teachers that have greater absenteeism more than 10 days a year. So what we did was we created another table, taken out those 37 absences to show what the statistics look like, taking that amount of teachers out that had that chronic absenteeism. It was determined that the percentages were pretty much in line with other schools. The average was 3.38 to 4.84 days after removing those 37 teachers. East Gloucester had the highest. Veterans had the lowest. East Gloucester's absenteeism is 7.5%, where Veterans is 4.25. The number of teachers absent 10 or more days per school. The high school was the highest, having 16 teachers. Veterans scored the lowest, having zero, which I thought was pretty impressive. And then absent, absences per teacher excluding the less than 10 teachers, Plum Cove had the lowest at 3.38%. So we discussed a little bit further and realized there might be some more information to come forward, whether FMLA had been included. We couldn't make a determination if those teachers that were out on that, that federal leave were included. Another, other work in... Another, other working, other working documents within the district that might show us some different information. So having this discussion, we're going to discuss it further at our next meeting scheduled for February eleventh. The other topics, we were, we started to discuss consideration of an increase in a personal salary request that involved the technological department. Grayton Harris was unable to make the meeting, so we really didn't hear, we didn't hear a lot about the request. However, so we put that up to the eleventh also. And then we had a topic, a conversation about the assistant principal salary range. We looked at a chart that was prepared for us by the district to look at dark communities, which are communities that have the same demographics as Gloucester. And then we also looked at some surrounding communities. We did get some figures. However, we put the request back on the administration to come up with some more local figures. So there was no determination made on that yet. I know the position's hired, however, we'll have time by the next meeting on February eleventh to make a determination of what the salary should be. And not only what the salary should be, but how is it going to impact the current assistant principals that are now employed under the salary they are now. So that was the end of our discussion and we will discuss most of those topics again at our next meeting on February eleventh.
So moving on to action items. We have two grants to accept. The first one is from Cassett. I don't remember what it stands for, but it's the Italian consulate, I believe. And it's a grant to GHS World Language Department, amount of five hundred dollars.
I'll move second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous. The second is the Energy North grant and the amount of five hundred dollars to Gloucester High School. And this comes through the Sandy Bay Service Services at, in Rockport, which is an automobile service. And this is, you'll remember that we accepted this after some lengthy discussion. So this is not the same thing. This is the exact same thing for the next year.
I move that we accept the grant, second.
Discussion, Dor.
Why has the address changed? On the agenda it says, I originally thought it was the same one also, but the agenda says-
The other one was Exxon.
What?
Energy North, amount of five hundred, this-
Yeah, the other one was Exxon. I'm thinking I like Exxon, but I don't like the idea of getting the money.
Right. It says five hundred dollars to store Gloucester. Seventy-three Essex Avenue, Gloucester was approved on January ninth.
That's another one. This is the second one I thought.
I'm sorry, is this another one where you have to post?
Yeah, it's the same.
Have they gone through, do you have to go through BNF to get?
Yeah, we, we went through that and we made a recommendation to the full committee that, that we accepted and they accepted it at-
No, I meant, I meant this one.
This one.
This one, if it were BNF, because it's still advertising, that was the poster situation.
And you're right, you're, the, all advertising the schools should go through BNF.
Exxon.
The other one was Exxon. We can take it up.
We can take it up. Yeah, we can, we can choose to take it up at full committee.
Can I suggest that we do so that it's the same, but unless there's objection.
Is this the same grant?
It's a different company that has secured the same grant. So it's, it's double the money.
Different local company has filed for it after school. We see the same Exxon. It's the same thing as the poster, means we place somewhere likely in the auto shop.
Correct.
So that, I think we need to have some sort of motion where we approve that advertising in the auto shop and then accept the grant, right?
Yeah, that's what we did last time. Okay. So the first thing we need to do is waive the review by BNF.
Second.
Is there any discussion about that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Now, this grant involves the putting up of a poster. Hopefully it's not exactly the same one that we accepted a couple weeks ago. So it's to allow advertising in the auto shop for Energy North, which is Exxon.
I move that we approve the grant from Energy North, amount of five hundred dollars.
Now, we've got to approve the advertising in the shop first. Allow the advertising.
I thought we did that by waiving the policy.
That we waived the referral.
No, we just waived the referral to, we didn't waive the policy. We waived, we waived the review.
So we need to motion waive the policy?
No, we, we, no. The, the policy is that we can do it. We're not waiving the policy. We're approving that the advertising can go in the school.
So a motion that we approve the grant and allow the advertising. Is that what we're trying to do?
Yeah, we're going, we're going to do them one at a time, so it was clear though. So we're going to allow-
So I move that we allow the advertising inside the auto shop for Exxon Mobil's poster.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now we need to accept the grant for five hundred dollars.
I move that we accept the grant for five hundred dollars.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Can we refer this policy for review?
We, we-
Well, we may want to change the language. If every time we get a grant opportunity, we have to do three motions to approve a grant. It just seems like maybe we should be reviewing our policy. Maybe coming up with better language.
It's only a grant that involves advertising.
It's only, the, the policy is about advertising. And it says that any advertising in the schools has to be approved. It will be reviewed by the BNF. They'll make a recommendation. Has to be, there's a whole long laundry list of criteria that it has to meet. And then it has to be, on the recommendation from BNF, it has to be voted on at the school committee. That's the policy.
Right. I'm just thinking we might want to review it. I mean, I come from a school committee up at the tech that took a lot of money and with a lot of advertising and we didn't have a policy that said we couldn't do this. I mean, there might be a more simpler way to address it and maybe get some more money coming to the schools as opposed to having this long laundry list every time someone wants to donate us money. I just think it's a little bit of a barrier.
Well, the laundry list says what kind of advertising we'll allow. And to Mr. Woods here, and he was involved in this, on the advertising on the field, the soccer field, the softball field, excuse me. And, you know, there's just a procedure in place. I don't think, I think it's a perfectly good procedure. I don't, I don't see any, any, any reason to change it. But if you want to make a motion, see if it gets seconded and-
No, I'll just do five motions every time someone wants to donate. Crazy.
Okay. All right, moving on. Discussions in board business. MSBA, there is in your packet the approvals of two building meetings. Dor and Lydia have sent us their consultants and they have gone through both sites this past week. East Gloucester, did they go to Green Street?
No.
I'm not sure either. I know they went to East Gloucester and that's. And they are in the process, and I'll repeat this again because I, and I think I, we need to get this out to the public as, as quickly as possible. There is essentially thirteen different possibilities that MSBA is going to require us to look at. And they include looking at East Gloucester as just renovating it, meaning paint and paper and that sort of stuff. Renovating it with additions, demolishing it and, and- and renovating it with additions for a combined school or as a standalone school. Demolishing it and building a combined school or a standalone school at East Gloucester site. And then we have to do similar thing at the Veterans site. But we don't, not, it would only be for the combined school. And then we have to look at Green Street for a combined school and a standalone school. So those are the things that MSP is, requires us to, to look at before we, to make any decisions. That we need to have information on all of those possibilities. So that's where we're at in the process. There is some issues of, on, on all of these sites that we're trying to resolve to do with their deems. We don't have what would appear to be cleared title to any of them. East Gloucester has a playground that was donated by the Parsons family. That's not part of school property. Veterans has a baseball field there, which was not part of the school property. And all of Green Street's not school property at all. It's his city property, but it is, it's made up of almost twenty-three different lots. And some of them have different restrictions on, or different paperwork. So we're in the process of doing title searches on all of the properties because we can't even move forward unless we have clear title to the land we're talking about. So that's where we're at with that. The, are there any questions about the building process that we're in the middle of?
We are doing tours of a couple schools. So on Thursday morning, we are going to the Brezner Hand School in Newburyport, nine o'clock, if anybody wants to see a different elementary school. And next week, on Tuesday morning, we are going through the Esther Brook School in Lexington. And then the, another school in Devon. Yep. And then a school in construction. So to see those other examples in construction. So that the building committee, and anybody is welcome to join, so that we can see examples of more recently built schools. Also on Thursday, after Newburyport, they're going to West Parish. So a lot of the people on the building committee hadn't seen the inside of West Parish as well. So it's just part of exposing people to kind of what's new and shiny and current and the, and the SBA standards. Joel has a question.
Joel.
I think, just to piggyback on that, I sit in the audience at a lot of the building committee meetings. And what I found very interesting from, I believe it was the representative, Dor and Whittier, she was explaining that the rate with which MSBA regulations change is swift to the point where things we did with West Parish are no longer code. So we couldn't build West Parish, certain design elements, certain room inclusions, exclusions would no longer be reimbursable via MSBA. And something's great that the building committee is going out to look at other schools, including ones under construction, because even West Parish is, is old news at this point as far as MSBA is concerned. And that was surprising to me.
It could also have to do with their budgetary, right? If they don't want to reimburse in particular, if they're running out, if they're reducing how much they want to give, they probably come up with different thresholds, right?
She did, she did mention that and a couple of the things that she did say is, is that the, we got a substantial reimbursement at West Parish because it's a gold, a Leeds gold building. And she did say that, that, that reimbursement has, has gone down.
What was it? Leeds?
Leeds. It's ecologically.
Oh, the green?
It's greens. It's a green building. And the other one was the, was it contract at risk that you used to get appointed to for that?
CMT.
CMT at risk. And that, so there's a, you're right, there's, they're constantly changing that. But the, one of the things that, that they always caution is, with MSBA, it's always negotiation.
I'm not sure if you mentioned it, but while the facilities and the various sites are being inspected, there is also, at the same time, and the tours are taking place, there's also a quote leadership group, which is talking about programming, specific programming and its relationship to a space summary. So that the types of programming, the various different subject areas, the electives, the substantial separate programs, special education, your regular classrooms and everything else that's needed is all being discussed and put together in a narrative, which then, as I said, translates into a space summary, which gives a conceptualization of what the building might begin to look like potentially. So that, next meeting for the leadership group is on Tuesday, February the fifth.
Anything else on MSBA? We are required by our own operating protocols to review them once a year. And so I put this on the agenda to discuss how we would like to review them. It's been suggested that we do it in sort of a workshop setting where we can sit around at a table and talk about things and have it facilitated by a representative from Massachusetts Association of School Committees. We don't have to do it that way. We could do it, we could do it at a regular meeting. We could do it, so I, I've included the, the operating procedures and, and protocols. So you can review them and see if you, how you would like to handle our review of them. Joel?
Unless committee members are expressing a desire to look for change in their edits, I would think maybe, you know, independent review and then coming together on a motion to say, we're okay with them as is. If that's the world of committee, might save some time. If there are committees who would like, I'm supporting that also. I'd rather get into a workshop, but if everyone's going to have it the way they are, maybe we can just say, individually review them and, you know, support even keeping them as is.
Listen.
I, I would request a workshop because I think there's some changes and some updating to be made to it. There's some things that we follow and some things that we don't. They're nothing major, but I just would like to have the opportunity to sit down with Dorothy and find out what best practices are at other schools because he's off from two thousand and twelve. And if you go on their website, they still have older ones. They are as samples. But I think in the world we are today, there's, there's always room for improvement. And I think meeting with Dorothy Presler, our new representative, for a quick meeting would be helpful to all of us to engage in the conversation.
I believe I have a version from two thousand and sixteen.
Yeah.
It's just been approved over and over.
We did make some changes in two thousand sixteen.
Did we have a meeting?
And this one says it was approved in two thousand fifteen.
Yeah.
So should I circulate the two thousand sixteen one to all the members?
Yes, please do. There were relatively minor changes, but I know we made some changes.
So this one says seven, twelve, seventeen on it.
Yeah.
That's the same ones every year.
Yeah, that meant the rules of procedure.
I do know that we did make a little bit of change last time.
Okay, well, as, do we want to have a separate workshop on operating protocols? I have contacted Dorothy Presler, Presler. And she, and I gave her a number of dates of that, where we didn't have meetings. And the only one that came up for her as being, her being available was February twelfth. So it was February twelfth, the problem.
Would that be at night?
Yeah, it would be.
Tuesday night?
It'd be Tuesday night, five or six, something like that. We can set it to time.
That was one of the BNF.
That's when BNF was suggested. I talked to Toni this afternoon. I don't, he, he didn't think that the BNF was going to be very extensive. So he could start at four thirty. We could probably do operating protocols at six.
Okay.
If you want to do that. You need pardon for that? And that's all we're doing. And that's all we'll do. Okay, I put on the GHS Fieldhouse floor in preschool location. I basically just put them on as, to always be on the agenda so that we don't lose sight of them. But I did have a meeting with Mr. Castino last week, and he assured me that they're waiting for the result of the big study from Dor and Whittier on all of the city's properties. And he assured me that those two items are priorities, that they will, once they have the report, that they will, as they develop a course of action on how to deal with the report, these will be on the top of the list. He did mention a couple of other things on the top of these too, like the courthouse.
I know.
But, you know, but we're, so that's, that's all there is to say, because I think about that.
Did he give a expected timeline as to when this might be coming in?
He made it sound like it was going to be in the next couple of weeks. And that was last week. So I'm assuming that we're going to see this, and then they will, the administration will come up with an action plan, which he is, you know, he said they're developing an action plan. They're going to put some money into these things, hopefully every year, and start picking away at the things that need to be made. So that was his, it was very, I was very positive meeting about how we're going to follow with this. We have a letter from the GTA requesting that we start collective bargaining. So we refer that to the negotiating committee to schedule.
The very long list of requests for information.
I believe that much of that information has been provided that the GTA has requested.
Yes, I sent some stuff over today or yesterday. And others, I referred them to the city of Gloucester, because it's their domain. The most recent final budget from the school department, we sent. Town's annual report, I referred them to the city. Student enrollment by grade for the last five years has been sent. Schedule A filed with Department of Revenue has been sent. That's recapitulation sheet, city of Gloucester. Certified free cash, city of Gloucester stabilization fund balance. City of Gloucester end of year pupil and financial report has been sent. Most recent expenditure report showing budget versus actual has been sent. And there's a couple of things here on the back. Teacher salaries paid out each year, the contract, 15, 16, 16, 17, 17, 18. A list of teacher retirements and names and salaries. Infumulated sick days, I believe Marie is working on that. Sick leave usage, personal day usage and bereavement leave usage. Again, we're reporting on that. So the bulk of what they've asked for, we've sent and/or referred them to the city. And we'll take care of this other business for the next few days as well.
Can I put a request in to get CC'd on the information we sent to them? I mean, I know I have seen some of it already, but I would like to have access to whatever they have access to for information. They will be helpful.
Sure.
Thank you. It's just an email, right? I don't want paper. Is it just an email?
No, no, all electronic.
Okay, is there any other new business or old, somebody would like to bring up before we go into executive session?
I just had something on the clock. I had sent an email to the members, so they knew what I was talking about when I brought up this request. There is a program in Gloucester that is currently in our schools called the Community Collaborative Initiative. And I'm going to quickly really tell you what it is. It's mandated, Mass General Law has mandated that the district attorney's office establish, implement, and coordinate a partnership of schools, police, and state agencies to address violence prevention and school violence. So there's an initiative that goes on throughout Essex County with the Essex County DA that involves the DA, the juvenile court, juvenile probation, Department of Children and Families, Department of Youth, and Department of Mental Health, the police, and the schools, where they meet on a monthly basis to talk about our most vulnerable children and high-risk students within the school. So I would just like, either at a future meeting for the school committee or to refer to program, the administration's response to, if this program is going on in Gloucester, who's attending the programs from each grade level and/or from administration, and how the program is working here. If they feel it is working, if they feel the conversations are beneficial. I've been told that in Manchester and Rockport, it's very successful, and I would just like to hear if that's happening here too. I just, I don't know what that answer is, so I was hoping that the school committee can be informed on it.
What, who, not by name, but by, who said that they're successful? What's their perspective on it? I don't care the name.
No, I've heard from the agencies themselves, because I work with these agencies at work. You know, Department of DVS, DCF, and DA's office and things, police. And I hear that they're going into other schools, and I haven't heard much about Gloucester. And wouldn't want, I'd want to hear it from the school, not them.
You have some information on that?
Well, I'd like to have maybe both the high school and the school administration either providing the report or having them come in and speak with you. I know that the next meeting for the CCI is March the 15th at a 30th and 10th O'Malley.
I mean, what really triggered my reaction is I know we get a lot of communication from you when saying there's a lockdown in the school. It's usually because of child behavior. And these are the children that I believe would be talked about at these kind of meetings. So it just piqued my curiosity a little bit to see how...
The nature of these meetings is if there are children who are involved with the courts or with the police, there's an exchange of information between the district attorney, the police department, and the school administrators regarding the status of these children, both outside and inside school, if they need a CRA, if there are ongoing court issues with these particular children, how they're faring in the schools, and so on and so forth. That's the kind of information sharing that takes place.
Yeah.
And I'd like to have the administrators that attended come and give you a little more detail without names, obviously.
Right. That'd be helpful, thank you.
Sure.
Anything else before we go into executive session?
When are we going to do the superintendent's goals?
I would say, where was it, the 30th? We could either do it on the 13th or the 28th.
So next month?
Yeah, which is traditional.
Okay.
Is that something you are going to bring to us, or?
Yeah, well, that's what happens.
How is that...
We're working now on the district improvement plan. We're incorporating a lot of work in Essex County Learning Collaborative. And then based upon the work of the district improvement plan, I then try to mirror my evaluation with some of the central elements of the district improvement plan. And subsequently, we ask the schools to develop their school improvement plans in conjunction with the district improvement plan as well.
Thank you.
Anything else? We're going to make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy on negotiations, upcoming negotiations, as well as to review a number of grievances from the GTA. We will come out of executive session only to adjourn. So we have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we'll call those.
Ms. Sweet, yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
They have taken.
Yes.
Kathy Plancy.
Yes.
Mr. Pivost.
Yes.
And Shannon Paul.
Yes. Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess, and then we will move on to executive session.